Welcome, everyone. To the September 15th City Council Work Session and Meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency. And I think Councilor Polbin is going to be joining us later.
He's on the phone, but he is coming on his way.
He's on his way. All right. So, the first item up is the work session on the recovery zone bonds and downtown site development, another step in the revitalization of downtown. City Manager?
Thank you, Mayor. And I'll turn it over to Danny to go through the details, but just to echo your comments, this is a next step in really a variety of projects that are moving forward, which is pretty exciting in the downtown, so we're really happy about that. This is what often is called the Astor Pit, and so between LCC and this particular project, we'll take care of both of those psychological pits in this community, and I think that will offer a lot of encouragement. So, Danny, I'll turn it over to you for the details.
Thank you. I'd first like to acknowledge some of our stakeholders that are here with us today in the room. From Bennett Management Company, Rob Bennett, Sarah Bennett, and the other Rob Bennett. Wells Fargo, Gene Swan is here today with us, and Project Architects anchor Moysin. We have Kevin Sauer and Esther Anancieta, who's with us from the architect team, so welcome. So, last month, council expressed its support in concept to a proposal for the vacant parcel that's owned by Beam, under which the property would be transferred to Bennett Management Company for redevelopment. And council provided us direction to bring back the project details, including the action items needed for the project to move forward. Because there are a few actions being considered today by both the City Council and the Urban Renewal Agency, I want to start with an overview of the requested actions. First, council is being asked to consider approval of the overall outline of terms for the Bennett project. Second, council is being asked to consider approval of a resolution related to the use of the recovery zone bonds. And you'll be considering two projects that would benefit from the recovery zone bond tool, the Bennett project and LCC's downtown campus student housing project. Finally, because of the current agreements on Beam's property are between Beam and the Urban Renewal Agency, the Urban Renewal Agency will need to approve the transfer of the property and the development rights attached to the property. This is a conceptual design for the Bennett project. They're working with anchor margin architects, as I mentioned. They are also the architects who are working on Beam's building. Like many of the initial design, project design images that come forward, this is just a kind of an initial concept. It's not intended to be the actual design or the final design. It's hard to decipher from the image, but it's, this is intended to be a brick building. And just to recap, the project would include approximately 50,000 square feet of new construction with ground floor retail, floor floors of office space above, and embedded or underground parking. And the total project costs, including the land, the hard cost and the soft cost, are estimated at $11 million. There is an outline of terms proposed for the project in Attachment A in your packet, and I will summarize the nature of the terms. Starting with the property transfer, Beam will transfer ownership of the vacant parcel to Bennett. Beam's compensation for the transfer will be limited to Bennett's assumption of our existing $404,000 downtown revitalization loan program loan on the property. Bennett has also requested that we restructure the loan. Basically, we're being asked to consider rate and/or repayment term adjustments that ultimately will help the project meet the bank's underwriting criteria and make the project feasible. Any adjustments to the loan would be finalized after the bank has gone through their full appraisal process, they've settled on final terms, and we can find a need, a definitive need for restructuring the debt. In order for the bank, in order for the project to meet the bank's requirement that 75 percent of the project be pre-leased, the terms include a commitment from the city to lease 10,000 square feet and guarantee an additional 10,000 square feet of space in the building. The city's guarantee will be reduced as additional space is leased and the bank's minimum requirement is reached. The terms include sources of financing for the project. Bennett is working with Wells Fargo, and the bank loan is expected to be in the range of seven to eight million, and the actual amount will be finalized following the bank's appraisal process. Bennett is committing to put a minimum of 2.25 million equity into the project, and we are being asked to fill the gap that remains in the form of the assumption of the loan on the property and a new downtown revitalization loan, not to exceed 10 percent of the project. We've not committed to a specific loan amount at this time because we need to see the bank appraisal and the final bank terms before we can really define a true need for the project. Of course, our desire is to keep that bank loan and that equity contribution at a maximum so that we don't reach that 10 percent. The terms also provide for Bennett's assumption of Beam's rights and obligations to develop the site, including construction of the proposed building, assumption of the timeline for development that's included in our current agreement with Beam, which basically states that the project must be ready to proceed by May 1st, 2011. Also, consistent with the agreement with Beam, the property ownership would revert back to the Urban Renewal Agency in event that the project doesn't move forward as agreed. Finally, the terms also include the use of the city's recovery zone bond allocation, so I would like to recap some of the details related to the recovery zone bonds. And again, we're talking about two projects, Bennett and LCC, and two separate recovery zone allocations. The city received approximately $11 million in facility bond authority, which can be used to support private development projects, but not including housing, of course. And we received approximately 7.4 million in economic development bond authority, which must be used for public facilities. Also, both bond allocations must be used by the end of this calendar year. We are proposing, they also both require designation of a recovery zone boundary, and we're recommending that the city limits become the boundary for efficiency and to maximize the flexibility in the program. Regarding the facility bonds allocation, we're proposing to use up to $8 million for Bennett's project. The actual amount of the recovery zone bond will be in the amount of the bank loan when that bank loan is finalized. The city would issue the bonds, and as a result of the bond issue, the Bennett project would receive a bank loan that has a lower interest rate because the bonds provide a tax-exempt status for that bank loan. Bennett would be responsible for all transaction costs associated with the bonds, along with the full responsibility to repay and secure the debt. The city isn't assuming any risk in this recovery zone bond transaction. I don't know how to go backwards.
Good, we never go backwards.
Can you go back one for me, Sarah, please? Previous, there it is.
Left arrow.
Can you go backwards? Okay, here we are. So, regarding the city's economic development bond allocation, the LCC board took action last week to formally request the full amount to help finance the student housing portion of the downtown campus project. If approved, council, the ability to issue the bonds would be transferred to LCC, and LCC would issue the bonds, and again, the city would not assume any risk or repayment obligations on behalf of LCC. As a public facility, the student housing project is eligible and appears to be a good candidate for the bonds for a few reasons. First, there's a pending deadline to use these bonds, and the student housing project is currently being designed, and the funds could begin to be drawn down before the end of the year, with actual construction scheduled for this project around March of next year. Secondly, the bonds are different from the facility bonds. They're sold and repaid with interest, and because the feds offer some interest cost savings, the student housing project becomes more financially feasible using this tool. And also, the bonds require a source of repayment, and the student housing is a new revenue source that has the capacity to repay the bonds. You received an updated resolution related to the urban renewal bonds, which has been amended to include the transfer of the full amount of the city's economic development recovery zone bond allocation to Lane Community College. So, as previously outlined, the recommendation for the city council actions are to approve the outline of terms for the Bennett project, approve the resolution related to the recovery zone bonds for the Bennett project, and LCC's student housing project. And also, the recommendation for the Urban Renewal Agency is to approve the transfer of the property from Beam to Bennett and allow Bennett to redevelop the vacant parcel consistent with the outline of terms that have been presented.
So, we're ready for questions or comments.
All righty. That's an exciting vision for trying to keep moving forward and partnership to get things done for our downtown, both for revitalization and for economic development, jobs, all those kinds of things. Mike, and then Betty.
Danny, first of all, I want to say congratulations to you and the rest of the folks and staff who've been working really hard on this and working so well with the Bennett Companies to try and put together a project here that works for everybody and helps revitalize downtown. One of the things you mentioned kind of made me scratch my head a little bit here. Isn't a recovery zone bond kind of, isn't the idea of that to affect blighted areas? Not with the purpose of a recovery zone bond would be?
There's quite a bit of latitude in what the community determines to be economic hardship, and it has to do with, this is an economic stimulus tool, so it has to do, as stated in the resolution, our findings include high unemployment, you know, increased foreclosure...
I just thought it was odd that we're going to draw the lines to the city limits and say that the whole city of Eugene is a recovery zone.
That's really to provide flexibility in the use of the tool. I mean, the clock is ticking, and we only have to the end of the year, but it could be possible, you know, we could have a remaining $3 million in our, of our $11 million application, allocation. It could be that, you know, another use comes forward that maybe is not downtown.
Sure, and we want to give ourselves the greatest flexibility.
We want to have the greatest flexibility so that we don't have to go recast the zone bonds.
Are we in any trouble with the feds to draw lines at such a large?
No, and we have, you know, our bond council has been through this, and most communities have done just what we have done. The county designated a zone which includes all of Lane County, for example.
Seems odd to me, but okay. It gives us flexibility. I certainly understand it. Thank you.
I guess I might, my, yes, go ahead.
I actually, I'm sorry, one other part. With the Bennett project, what do you estimate the recovery bond portion as a percentage of the total budget for the project would be?
Well, it's $8 million of $11 million project, but remember that that $8 million really is an estimate of the bank loan, and that the recovery zone bond will be in the amount of the bank loan. So, if the bank loan is 7 million, the recovery zone bond will be 7 million. It's basically a tool that really only has the effect of reducing the interest rate on the bank loan by making it a tax-exempt bank loan. So, it's a mere...
I know. So, help me understand this. I apologize for being a little bit slow-witted on this. I'm not exactly understanding what the difference is between, or what the effect of the recovery zone bond is on the bank loan itself.
So, the bank makes a loan, that loan is tax-exempt from the bank's standpoint, therefore, they can offer a lower rate to that private company who's developing a project.
Would it be fair to characterize that we're essentially backing some part of the loan?
We are taking no risk, we are not issuing bonds, it's a, it's kind of a quirky mechanism that really, again, ultimately results in that bank being able to offer a tax-exempt rate on a traditional...
But it's federally guaranteed, then? Yes?
Okay. It's pretty unique. I mean, this is not a traditional tool that has been used before.
Right. It's typically used quite a bit for nonprofit facilities, for instance, but the Stimulus Act provided this special treatment for some private companies that wouldn't normally be able to access tax-exempt financing. And the only way they can do that is through a government, so we are using our authority as a government to help the company access tax exemption.
Okay.
But there's no public backing, there's no public risk. The private entity in this case still has responsibility, like any loan, to pay back the loan. The real difference is, rather than getting a loan at X percent, they're getting at X minus, and so that minus results in a less monthly payment.
The federal government's putting a good housekeeping seal of approval on this to a certain degree, and that lets the banks loan it at a smaller rate? Yes?
Well, the federal government's trying to encourage, you know, encourage economic activity and development to occur, and they're willing to forego income tax dollars as a result. That's really what the public subsidy is, is there'll be less income tax dollars from people who earn tax-exempt income, right?
To the city or to the...
The city doesn't get income tax, so it's federal and state.
Thank you very much for putting up with all my wild questions. Very much. Greatly appreciated.
Before I call, I've got Betty, and Alan, and George Brown in the queue, and before that, I just want to point out that I think that in terms of our downtown revitalization, which we've been trying to have happen since the '70s, and in terms of the situation, our county finds it's soft, and in our current economic status, I would say putting that all together puts us in a strong position for needing some revitalization and this, a special help for recovery zone, so I think that is appropriate. Betty?
Thank you. Something you just said, since the '70s, I thought it was pretty vital in the '70s, the late '70s at least, and the early '80s, but that's beside the point. Tax-exempt, who saves, who doesn't have to pay income taxes?
The bank.
The bank doesn't have to pay income taxes.
On that loan.
Particular case, on that loan.
On that loan.
On the interest that they get back.
Right.
So, we're taking money away from the government. That's just a quick. About the housing, how many units? The LCC, I'm skipping to LCC.
Thank you. They originally talked, they talked about accommodating 200 students, and that really, how many units is, depends on how many students go in each unit, but they are actually talking about trying to expand that number to as maybe something like 220 students.
So, they'd probably be sharing rooms, or you don't know that?
There will be an array of offerings, you know, you could live alone, you could share, you could be in a quad, they're going to try to, I mean, it's all conceptual, they're in the design phase right now, but they're going to try to create a few different products that appeal to different students, depending on what they're looking for.
Okay, and how much rent, do you know?
We don't know.
And would it be confined to LCC students, restricted to them?
No. I mean, initially, the units would be targeted to LCC students, but it's very feasible that there's, might be opportunities for U of O students, NCU students, other students to, I mean, they need the, in order for the project to work, they need the units to be filled, so I don't think they're going to really eliminate anyone from being eligible as long as they're willing to pay the rent and fill the units.
They wouldn't have to be students even.
At this point, I think the expectation is that they are students, that's their market, and that's how the...
I'm just thinking, community college students usually don't live on campus or live in a dorm, just because of the nature of community colleges and the nature of the people who attend them.
It is changing. The, a lot of students are choosing to go to community college because the cost of four-year college is very extraordinary, so they start their first couple of years getting the basic coursework done in the community college, and those students are looking for a college-like experience, and that would include housing. So, I think the market is changing in community colleges, and other community colleges are building housing as well.
Really? Where?
I don't have any specifics, but I know there are some others in Oregon, yes.
There's two in Oregon, I think you...
I taught at Coos Bay one year, long time ago. Okay, what happens if people, if nobody rents it, what happens to the housing, and what happens to the city?
Well, again, the...
They aren't able to rent them.
Like the Bennett recovery zone bonds, the recovery zone bonds have no risk associated with the city, we're not accepting any risk. These are bonds, the authority would be transferred to LCC, they would issue the bonds, they would assume all risks associated with the performance of the student housing, so they're responsible for the debt, they're looking at debt financing on that, for that project, and the rents would support that debt. So, it really is LCC's risk at this point.
There's no risk to the taxpayers of Eugene, there's no risk to the taxpayers.
It would be a revenue bond, supported by the revenue associated with the rents.
And, well, there would be a risk. There would be a risk.
The risk is to LCC, so wherever they receive their...
Which is supported by the taxpayers, of course.
Right, and so whatever's backing that bond is the collateral that's against that bond, so if the bank, if LCC cannot make their payments, whatever they have for collateral, that would come into play, depending on how they've negotiated the terms of the bond.
Okay, thank you. Alan?
So, good work, Danny and John, and everybody's pulling one of these off. I think this really helped revitalize downtown. It's a creative use of financing mechanisms, and my experience with every project I've been involved with that's semi-complicated, there's no such thing as a simple, straightforward financing deal, like we borrow the money from the bank, we pay them back, and it doesn't work like that. Reality of them, they're all complex, and this one holds up to that standard. So, one of the things on the recovery zone bonds, it's on Slide 8, you said must be used by end year 2010, what does "used by" mean?
There's actually a definition, and the definition is it has to include a substantial draw, and so, for example, in the Bennett project, that substantial draw would be an amount, and I don't, I can't tell you exactly what the amount is, it might be 50,000 or 100,000, that would be drawn down, in this case, to support soft costs, architectural work on the project that's headed for construction. And talking with our bond council and so forth, those types of uses, as long as they're related to the project, are considered to be a draw, and so the timing seems to work for both of these projects, because LCC is actually in design, and Bennett's project could be in design really quickly.
So, both of these mechanisms come out of the stimulus package, so they're supposed to create jobs, and both of them will, so there's two different funds. The facilities bond's 11.1 million, and the economic development bond's 7.4 million. The 7.4 million goes to LCC. We're not standing behind it, it's just a pass-through mechanism through cities to allow us to have our fingerprints on the project, and so that seems appropriate. And then, of the 11.1 million we're giving, we're allowing Bennett property to take, to use 8 million of it, leaving 3 million more, and that's no risk to the city, but it is a tax-exempt bond, so it lowers their debt service, which allows the project to be cheaper and financing to come by easier from the banks. Are they having any problems securing financing? Because what I'm hearing almost everywhere for projects is financing is very difficult to acquire because of the tightness of the marketplace.
Yeah, they're working with Wells Fargo, as I mentioned earlier. Wells Fargo has looked at the project, the, some of the preliminary numbers associated with the project. They have issued some initial terms, but of course, they have to go through an appraisal process, since that's before they would commit. And Bennett Management has a long history of working with Wells Fargo, they've financed several of their projects, so I think...
They do the DAC through Wells Fargo?
Yeah, I believe many of the projects have been, yes, and so, every indication that we've gotten from the bank and from Bennett Management at this point is that this is headed in the right direction. Now, they haven't committed funds yet, obviously, they have to go through their underwriting, but it looks pretty positive at this point.
So, what you're, so this is no risk to the city, it's all pass-through, but we have to approve it. So, what you're asking is approval of the use of these funds for these two different projects today.
Yes.
And I think it'd be great to have a local company build a building like this next to the Beam project, and also to LCC to finance their student housing. I think those would be two really big jumpstarts for the downtown and great assets for revitalization, so I support both of these, and I will vote yes.
Thank you. George Brown?
Thank you. The state of Oregon let us know that we had to put in motion the use of these funds by the end of this month, is that correct? Didn't we have till September 30th to get moving on...
We have been talking with the state, they asked us for information about, you know, what our plans might be for using the different recovery zone allocations, so we have, we are communicating with them all the time about this.
Well, my understanding, the last time we talked about this was that we pretty much had a kind of a deadline, that they would reallocate it, I mean, tell other cities, like, okay, Eugene's not going to use these evidently, so they're still available to somebody in Oregon, but it wouldn't be us anymore, or we'd have to compete with other people instead of just having first dibs.
I think that's a possible scenario, but they haven't, they have, there's no particular administrative rule or law around that, so I think it will be a conversation that we have with the state rather than something that automatically happens.
Okay, I thought we had to make up our mind, I mean, what I, my point was the action we're taking today will obviously...
Help, yes.
Make that go, that problem go away.
Yes, yes.
That was my understanding, is it was kind of a time-critical thing there. And the other part is, doesn't the whole thing go away by December 31st? If it's not, you know, use it before then or lose it? And doesn't that mean that the bank loans have to be approved? I mean, they have to be final approval on all that stuff, and then you said a drawdown before the first of the year of the approved loans?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thanks. Then I just had a comment. I guess, kind of in response to a couple of Counselor Clark's questions, was that, I did a little reading about this before our last meeting, when we discussed it, and these have been available for almost two years all around the country. Very little of it's been used. It's been, it's been difficult for people to understand how to use them. I was reading that, like, Los Angeles, of course, had an enormous allocation, and they've used almost none of it. It was really kind of odd, so I'm really happy that we're finding a beneficial use for these funds, and we'll be quite happy to support both, the parts of the actions today. Thanks.
Thank you. Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm going to support this, these motions, I think it's a good idea. I think the Bennett Company has shown a good track record in what they put their efforts into, so I'm more than happy to support this. I kind of have a question, and you're kind of the expert on the enterprise zone, that has community standards on the people, you know, on the living wage issue, so it's challenging for us in this, for me, anyway, when people talk to me about their, our local kids and our local contractors and workers not actually working, you know, being subcontracted to do the work, you know, when they're bringing people in, like, for on the U of O arena, they brought electricians in from Portland, you know. Is there any way to encourage or to talk about that with, you know, when we get to that point? I would really like to, I mean, I can't, you know, I tried to talk to the University of Oregon, and of course, they, you know, they weren't very responsive, I'll add, but I really feel like if we have our DNA on anything, we really should know that those jobs, I mean, it would be good to know that those jobs are local and that we're really impacting the community.
Well, Bennett Management, I think, has a history of working with local, a local contractor for their construction projects. You know, Lane Community College will go out to bid, and we'll have to see how that, but I know that it's something they've been hearing, because, of course, there are a lot of local workers and companies looking for work and starving for work, so I know that LCC has also heard the same sentiment, that they need to strive to try to make that happen locally, so...
Thank you.
I just want to add to that, that I did, in the discussion about the LCC project, I did hear some concern about prevailing wage, and I did have a conversation with Mary Spildy, and she assured me that they would be using prevailing wage for the work at LCC, so just so you know that. Okay, you want to put them...
Yes, Mayor, I will. I move to approve Bennett Management Company's redevelopment of the vacant parcel and...
Is that the, yep, sorry, I put the wrong one, go ahead.
I'll start again.
Yes, without my interruption.
It's all right, it's okay. We're all on my track here, that's good. I move to approve Bennett Management Company's redevelopment of the vacant parcel and authorize the city manager to enter into the necessary agreements consistent with the terms included in Attachment A.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes, great. Next one?
I move to adopt Resolution Number 5014, Designating the City of Eugene as an ARR A Recovery Zone, authorizing preliminary actions, excuse me, in connection with conduit bonds for Bennett Management Company, and authorizing sub-allocation or transfer of the... for Bennett Management Company and authorizing sub-allocation or transfer of recovery zone economic development bond authority for Lane Community College.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Thank you. I am going to adjourn the meeting of Eugene City Council and convene a meeting of the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency.
I move to approve the ownership transfer for the vacant parcel from BEAM to Bennett Management Company and authorize the agency director to enter into agreements necessary to allow the property transfer and the transfer of BEAM's redevelopment, excuse me, BEAM's development rights to Bennett Management Company.
Second. Moved and seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. And with that, I'm going to adjourn the Eugene Urban Renewal Agency and reconvene a meeting of Eugene City Council and say okay. One more step forward.
Onward.
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 Thank you very much.
Thanks, Danny. What's next?
All right. I think we'll let the grand shuffling of the room happen for a second here.
Vito, you want to watch those people for us, please?
I'll take your plate.
Thank you.
Thanks, sure.
All right, next up. Another exciting step for us as a community, something we've been working on for quite a long time, the Eugene Community Climate and Energy Action Plan. City Manager?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I'm looking for our team.
I think they're queuing up.
Queuing up.
Queuing up. So, this is another exciting part of moving forward on some pretty important goals that council has outlined for us and have come up in Eugene Counts as well. And there has been a lot of hard work. Matt's been working for at least 18 months on this kind of a project, doing great work. Pabu Sullivan's on board, going to help us to implement this as we move forward. And so I'll turn it over to Matt to kind of walk us through and then we'll be available for questions.
Thanks. I'm just going to take about 15 minutes and go over a quick PowerPoint, just to give you a quick update on where we've been since we last met in May and where we're going from here. So, first, I guess, a thank you to you all for starting the ball in motion to making this plan happen. It was about 18 months ago, you said, you know, make this, make this plan happen and we're here because of that. So, thank you. I think that the lasting impacts of this plan could be really, really significant. I also want to acknowledge the efforts of the Sustainability Commission. We have a couple commissioners here, Dave Funk and Sean Bowles. And as you all know, the commission made the recommendation that we get to start on this. So, thank you to that group as well. I also want to recognize Sean Bowles as one of our advisory team members who has participated in the production of this plan since we began last, a year ago, last June. So, thank you for your time. Oh, did that, sorry, I somehow got out of my, that's not so helpful. Got out of the slide, there we go. Oh, did it? There we go. Nope. All right.
We did that.
There we go. Wow.
We're moving right along.
All right.
It's that backwards.
Yeah, sorry, flashbacks. So, just a little bit of context to let you know that we're all in very good company. There's over 100 communities across the nation now who have created climate and/or energy action plans similar to this one. So I think we're, you know, we're in the metal of the front pack here and it's, in my view, it's a good place to be. And when you add in the states that have done so as well, clearly, we're in the right spot. I'd also like to just remind you really briefly about the public process that we had last fall with 500 participants and 70 topic specialists who have helped in the creation of this plan. And I think, I think it says a lot about how important this is to our community, but also a lot about just involvement in our, in our community as a whole. We're really fortunate to have such an active group of people here.
Can you speak louder?
Sure. Yeah, right. So, since May, we've been, we've been meeting with community partners, sharing the plan with them, getting feedback and making some minor adjustments to the plan. And so I just want to really quickly hit on the minor adjustments that we, that we have made. And you're probably aware of those, those were included in the AIS. But, really briefly, a couple of recommendations that have been added. One, to establish a commercial facility that can compost food wastes. And another, to reduce barriers to solar energy use and balance priorities for solar access. So those are really the only two changes in recommendations. And there's also been the addition of adopting the proposed Oregon greenhouse gas emission targets that come from the Global Warming Commission. We felt like that was an appropriate target that falls in line with, with the fossil fuel reduction targets that you all have set forward. And, anyway, so it's appropriate and incorporated in the plan. Really quick refresher on the organization of the plan, as you're all, you'll probably remember the categories that are in here. And just a quick reminder that this is not only greenhouse gas reductions, but also thinking about adaptation in the last couple of sections there, Health and Social Services and Urban Natural Resources, pointing really specifically at the need for adaptation. I also want to highlight some of the early actions, things that are happening right now, if I can. There it is. We've got a liaison on board already for food system programming within the solid waste and green building program, which is great. You all, you know, discussed the limitations on microlivestock and have been, I know you have some more time set aside to chew on that, but that's-
So does he.
Right. Oh, no. I'm going to leave the puns aside on that. Yeah, so, you know, some of the things that are recommendation, recommended in the plan, staff and you are already moving forward on. Another one is creating a pedestrian and bicycle master plan, which is underway in the transportation planning section. A few more, increasing the promotion of bicycling, walking and transit. As you're probably aware, the Smart Trips Harlow program is being run from, by our transportation planning group and promoting just that. We're also working on supporting installation of electric car charging stations. As you're probably all aware, we're one of just a handful of the communities across the nation who are getting funds invested from the Department of Energy. And one last one that I'll point out, that our solid waste and green building group is working on implementing the steps of the city waste reduction plan. So, there's a lot going on and I think this, this plan is helping to support this.
Solid Waste, comma, Green Building.
Thank you. So, too quickly, yes, thank you. Solid Waste and Green Building Program, right. So, a quick reminder, I know you all have taken a close look at the Eugene Counts and I just want to share with you some of the ways that these things are tied together, because it's, there's some very, very obvious connections that I think are worth highlighting. We've heard quite a bit from our community through Eugene Counts and I just want to give a kudos to the staff that have worked on that project and really trying to get a lot of feedback and synthesizing that. I know that was not an easy task. So we've heard many things about jobs as well as infill and compact development. And there were a handful, if you recall, a handful of common threads through Eugene Counts that I just want to touch on. Thriving Downtown, obviously something you were just working on previously, but this plan also pointing at the need to develop and increase dense infill within the downtown urban core. So, recognizing that that's an important key. Public safety is another one, and this plan is pointing at several things to try and reduce risk from wildfires, for example, as well as, as doing a vulnerability assessment, just to see where we're vulnerable to high fuel prices, et cetera. Public safety is a, is a pretty key piece of that. More jobs, certainly something that we're all familiar with and, as you're all aware, you know, the jobs that would be created by weatherization and, and some of the localized increase of renewable energies are jobs that would occur right here and really can't be outsourced. More effective communication was something that the public called for and specifically more public participation. And as you all know, we held seven public forums to really try and, and listen to and take advantage of all the wealth of knowledge we have in our community. So I think we've done that. We've also, this plan calls for specific reports back to you, back to Sustainability Commission to update, update on progress within the plan. And it also has clear measures and targets that we'll be referring to. And finally, alternative transportation modes was a, one of the threads that was, was pulled out and naturally, one of the things that we'll be looking to, to reduce greenhouse gas emissions throughout our community. So, did I miss one? I just, I think I skipped past one. Nope, I didn't. I just want to hit on the triple bottom line as well. A few things here that, just to highlight how this plan is really trying to think about all three bottom lines, it's not just an environmental plan, it's really thinking about the economics that affect our community as well. Energy efficiency for low-income households, obviously trying to make sure that our vulnerable populations don't get hurt by energy price spikes, for example. And diversifying the sources of operational funding for LTD, recognizing that the economic sustainability there is really important to the social bottom line, making sure that we have equitable transportation opportunities. Also, as we go into economics, thinking more about the economic bottom line, we're looking to EWEB. You may have noticed in the, in the building and the energy section, we're looking to EWEB's expertise to tell us where are the most cost-effective strategies for energy efficiency. We're trying to be very careful in target, the limited resources that are available. And also recognizing that the businesses within our community are dependent on freight transportation and that's not going to change and we need to make sure that as we're looking at shifting our land use and our transportation, that we're also keeping in mind the need for freight transportation through our community, that that can't be left behind. And finally, thinking about some of the more environmentally targeted aspects, also remembering that urban trees are not only pretty, but they also help reduce air pollution, for example, reduce heat island effect and have health effects that way. And so, some of the environmental actions that we're looking at have, have other benefits as well. Really quickly, I know this is a, there's a huge spreadsheet that's included in the back of this plan, you've all probably taken a chance to look at. This isn't intended for you to be reading it just as a reference of what you've already taken a look at. So first, I want to point out that, as you're all aware, that having a climate action plan like this is a tremendous tool as we look for grant funding. Being able to say, you know, we've done some prioritization here and here are where we feel the priorities are, allows us to be more effective when we're supporting other agencies or when we're applying for grant, grant funding ourselves along the lines of these, the actions that are included in the plan. We developed this rough scale in tandem with partners and subject experts throughout the community. As you know, it's a relative scale, it's not down to the dollar amount by any stretch, but it gives us an idea of the relative costs and impacts of several of these. And I want to point out that many of the actions within this will have net gains that may outweigh the, or, will have net gains, they'll have savings that outweigh the costs. So while the costs may come to the city in the form of trying to create a financial mechanism, you know, the benefits to our community in saved dollars on energy, on fuel, energy prices, for example, could be really significant, particularly not only with our, you know, 320 a gallon gas we have right now, but should we have energy price spikes in the future, those savings could be even more substantial. I also want to point out that I know there's an interest for more, more specific cost information. We feel the same way. We realize that doing a cost benefit analysis on all 76 actions would be incredibly expensive and so our strategy is to create a shorter list of the things that we want, we feel like are most likely to implement first and then do that further detail look at, at those actions, so that we're not spending resources, getting clarity on the whole set, but rather a more refined set, just to save ourselves some, some dollars. I also want to point out that the economic benefit of some of these things, especially as we look at climate adaptation, may be difficult to quantify. So, the benefits of greenhouse gas emissions may be easier to calculate, but some of the adaptation strategies are going to be a little more challenging to get numbers on. Sorry, they just jumped out again, my bad, dang it. Darn it. So, boy, sorry. Slide. All right, I'm going to skip through. Sorry about that. Darn it. I'm sorry. This is embarrassing. Question 16?
16.
Thank you. And landed on the right one. Actually, the previous one. As we're looking at implementation, we're trying to make a shorter list, as I mentioned, that we'll be doing a little more analysis on. So, in creating that shorter list, we've created a set of criteria that we'll be using to filter through all these 76 actions that are included in the plan. And so really quickly, I want to outline the criteria that we'll be using to create that shorter list. We'll be looking for, for actions that have a high potential for greenhouse gas or fossil fuel reduction, looking for things that have a high level of community support, as several of the actions do. They're, we're looking for things that may be relatively easy or straightforward to implement. As you know, some of them are going to be more complex than others. Things that are time-sensitive, so for example, we're wanting to highlight, work first on some of those actions that will inform and envision Eugene or our transportation plan update. Things that have high leverage, so where partners are already acting or there's grant funding opportunities, for example. And things that are likely to produce early success, so the things that our community can see, we're, we're making action here and then things that will inspire additional And the last set of slides is just to talk about how, how different actions, implementing different actions is going to be different. There are partnerships that are going to be important, so some of the actions are going to move a little bit more slowly. We don't have direct control over those things. The city may take an active role, but is not necessarily the lead. There are a handful of things where we can, you know, purchase carbon by the pound, there's predictable greenhouse gas emissions reductions for predictable amounts of money and we can just put in money and get some instant reductions. There aren't very many of those, but I'll talk about that in just a second. And then, there are going to be actions where we have multiple steps and we're just starting to lay the groundwork. So I'm going to hit on all three of these. So for example, and I do want to highlight that these actions that are outlined here are things that we're looking at for, for early implementation. Increasing energy efficiency in existing buildings, we're seeing as a really essential component. As you're all aware, you know, the existing building stock is, there's a huge portion of the homes that are going to be here in 20 years are already built today. And so, it's, while we have to think about new buildings, it's going to be essential that we invest in our existing homes and buildings. So, as we, as we look towards this, you're probably, many of you are aware that Lane County, for example, is working on a PACE program, which is having some hiccups and some challenges at the federal level. They're working now on creating a new strategy to do similar financing. If you're not familiar with PACE, it's, it's just a financing tool to allow people to be able to take out long-term loans to do energy efficiency upgrades for their homes. So this is one of those things where we don't have immediate control over what's happening, but clearly our support as an organization is going to be really important. There are a handful of things where, you know, we can, we can get reductions in a fairly straightforward way, where we can, for example, this one, reducing public agency purchase of greenhouse gas emissions, or greenhouse gas intensive goods. We can, we can pretty clearly figure out what those things are, they're going to have higher greenhouse gas emissions associated with them, and we can make some plans for how to reduce the use of those. Not saying that that's going to be easy necessarily to make those reductions, but there, there are things that are in our immediate control where we can spend dollars in a different way. And finally, as I mentioned, there are several things where it's going to be multiple steps and we'll be laying the groundwork. So, conducting a climate and energy vulnerability assessment is one of these actions. It's, it's not sexy, it's not something that's anybody's going to get really excited about, but it helps us make more informed decisions as we go forward. So, recalling that this plan is not just about greenhouse gas emissions, but also about adapting to the several degrees change that we'll see over the next 80 years, just making sure that we're aware of all of the, the changes and where we're vulnerable so that as we move forward, we can make informed decisions. That is the end of this section and I guess, finally, I just want to, want to remind you that we'll be continuing to give updates, not only to you, but also to the Sustainability Commission. We'll be looking for their feedback and input as, as this plan moves forward. And I neglected to- And I neglected to mention in the beginning, of course, we're looking for you as a council to endorse this plan, so that we can move forward with implementation of the plan as it is. So, that's the end of my presentation, and thanks very much for the time.
Matt, very much. Glad to see this, it's an ambitious plan, and the proof is in the pudding, so they say, so, it works all in front of us. I want to acknowledge all the folks once more, one more time who participated in putting this together, it's a lot of community input and a lot of bringing that community input into making the proposals, I want to thank the Sustainability Commission especially. And I guess, Sean, you in particular, for serving in several capacities. And I just want to add, I know many of us are crossovers into various committees and groups, and I was just thinking of the Envision Eugene yesterday, a lot of the things that are in here are the very things we're talking about in the Envision Eugene discussion, and I see a lot of the people around the room that are participating in that as well, so they will. And I also wanted to say that I noticed on our AIS, it talked about, I heard you say reporting back to council, and I just want to clarify that, because it talks about progress reports to the Sustainability Commission, but I just want to be sure, I want them to get it, because they've got to nudge us and all of that, but I also want it to come directly to us, so we can actually really see if we're making real, real progress in a, in a very practical way, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, thank you for that. Alan, and then Mike, I think I saw your hand.
Matt, great job on pulling this off, much less pulling off a really great plan.
Thanks.
It's a tough thing to do, and it meets the one-inch challenge, so you've done multiple good things here. I think it's really important to thank all the people that worked on this, and on page 63, or I mean, yeah, 65 of the document is Appendix 3, which actually lists all the people that are, that worked on this, and it's, the list is like-
Huge.
-three pages long, three columns. So, it's an enormous amount of people actually participated in this. I'm wondering if you could talk a little bit about the workshop process and how many people were just part of it.
Sure, yeah, thank you. Yeah, the list is long, there's, you know, teachers, other agencies who are involved, business owners, nonprofits, we really, yeah, we work to try and make sure that we are rounding out those groups as much as possible. The process there was that we, at the beginning of each section of the, of the plan, so for Buildings and Energy, for example, we called upon a number of people to help by participating as topic specialists, we asked them for their thoughts about, they took a look at a list of actions that were coming from other climate action plans, we asked them for their feedback on that. They then participated in the public forums, so when we had public come in and provide thoughts, those topic specialists were there to help fill out and round out some of the information about the current context in Buildings and Energy, for example. And then, we asked that group to come back again for a follow-up meeting, where we asked them to provide more pointed feedback and help us identify priorities, so that was, that was their role. Several of them have been called upon, as the process unfolded or continued, to help us, as we're making, as I mentioned, the estimates of costs in greenhouse gas emissions reductions, we were continually tapping those people to help us make sure that we're, we're getting estimates that are, that are accurate.
I know I attended several of the workshops, and some of them were incredibly well-attended, 100, 200 people at some of them. I tell that to people around, I tell that to some people around the country, and they're kind of struck by that, of how much involvement there was and how much interest there was in this. And I do this stuff for a living, create these kind of plans, and see a lot of these, and this is one of the best in the country, this is something we can be very, very proud of. The layout's great, it's very clear, the actions are easily identified, and you can really see that there's a lot of work put into this. I also sit on the Sustainability Commission, so I've seen this many times. One of the things I did was I, I was on the Oregon Global Warming Commission Transportation and Land Use Committee, chaired that group, and I took this document, that section on transportation land use, and we used it in that, the statewide plan now that's going forward in, in the Oregon Global Warming Commission, so that, our, this document, it's fingerprints that reach out into the state document, and extremely well-received, because it's very comprehensive. Two other points I wanted to make, one is that most of the actions in here are cost-effective actions, they make us more efficient, which makes us save money and spend less on energy, electricity, natural gas, fuels. It also makes us healthier, reduces our pollution, and it, and it does a good job of trying to get at the triple bottom line in economic environment, social. The social part's kind of the weakest one, but it's the weakest in all of these things in all triple bottom line analysis, but this one goes pretty far in moving that ball forward, and I will keep working on that. Mr. City Manager, I guess, how does, how does this get integrated into the everyday work of the city and the business-as-usual operations? So, where does this land, how does it get used and implemented?
I think probably in multiple ways. One is, as Matt mentioned, there are sort of the priorities of trying to move this forward, and what we will do is internally take those items and assign the right people to try to make those happen. Be able to be responsible for coordinating, managing that implementation. Some of it you'll see as we go through the regular budget processes. You might remember, this year, we did the budget, the council set some dollars aside, one-time dollars, to help implement the plan, and so, there will be some financial implications that would come back from the, from the budget perspective. But, we'll do this like we do other plans, we'll, it gets approved by the council, we take those, assign the right people to them, and they begin to move these forward. I think, as Matt mentioned, some of the things are already moving forward, because we have people that are starting to work through these things. And it gets coordinated out of our Sustainability Office.
Right, I hope we track the savings that's also there. Finally, can you just mention the health impact assessment? That's very innovative, first in the country, I think, can you talk about that a little bit, Matt?
Yeah, I'd love to.
The Appendix 5.
Right, right. Yeah, and I guess it came up during the Sustainability Commission check-in a month or so ago with you all. Upstream Public Health, which is an organization in Portland who has done a handful of health impact assessments, they're, they're calling that the equivalent to an environmental impact assessment. So, looking at a decision, okay, what are the health impacts? They were discussing, they came down and did a presentation here showing one of the HIAs that they had done for a project in Portland. We were interested in the idea, and they had offered to do an HIA. In fact, they went and found CDC funding to do the HIA, so while our name is on this, on that HIA, it's been in just trying to support by, you know, pointing them to the right people within our community, we had an intern who helped them do that, but really, the bulk of that work was done by Upstream Public Health, and it is the first one done on a climate and energy action plan. It would be great to have it done in things that aren't just land use and transportation, but that's an area where we have, you know, a lot more information, it's more easy, it's easier to relate those benefits. But, yeah, I feel like, I guess I'm proud that we, we took that step, that we took advantage of that huge offer by Upstream and included that as a part of the plan.
Jennifer?
I'm sorry, I got out of the queue, I saw Mike jump, he was in the queue before you, so.
Mike jumped, yeah. Matt, thank you very much, first of all, for the presentation and for the large-scale work on so many people's behalf, especially the ones in the room and those who've worked on this. There's a lot of people that have labored hard and long, and this is a good thing for us to study and look at this.
I want to support this motion, but I have some challenges with it, mostly around Alan's second-to-last question to the manager there, about the impacts of this particular motion on existing policy, and I'm trying to get my handle, my hands around the idea of the framework with which you'll, you'll implement this. It says in the last part of the motion that certainly there'll be approval by council of future policy changes, but I want to know what you consider a policy change if we're adopting this as policy framework for the city, with, I want to know at what level we'll be having discussion about policy effects in the future, because, and I'll just give you a little bit more, the reason is because there are a lot of things in here that I absolutely agree with. You don't have to have a whole argument about anthropogenic global warming effects, and whether or not we are or are not, or any of our effects will actually do anything or not, to know that there are a lot of smart things in here to do, and I'm for them, okay? But there are a lot of implications in some of these things that give me a little bit of pause, and have me asking about the cost-benefit analysis of each of them, and I don't have sufficient information to just kind of blanket, say, yeah, go forth and do good and do all this. There are a number of places in here, for example, where it talks about, where you were talking about expanding on diverse sources of, of operational funding for LTD, and I'm interested to know what that means. There's parts of this where we talk about setting aside, planning for future right-of-ways for MX, and that, to me, kind of implies an endorsement of their long-term mapping and where they intend to build, and some of those capital costs concern me a great deal. We had, we dodged a gigantic bullet the other day when we had a power shortage, an outage, in downtown, and that's because we have aging infrastructure that doesn't handle the load. Now, I'm, I recognize that there are a good number of people in our community that want to see us build more densely, and that's a part of this as well. But are we analyzing what the infrastructure costs of that are to the sewer and to the electrical system under the street sufficient in order to know that when we do that, we're prepared for it, and we're not going to see other dangerous situations like was created from the load that was put on the power system downtown? So, there's a lot of this stuff that I'm, I want to try and support this, but I'm really concerned that we're going to be pushing too far ahead of some of these decisions that require more analysis and more information before we make those decisions, so help me out.
It's hard to be specific, because I think there is a lot in here, but I'll take the LTD as an example around that. If the discussion is around other types of revenues to support the operational needs of LTD, that absolutely will have to be a part of a council conversation. I can't go out and create new revenue for LTD to operate in a different way, so I mean, in that sense-
Can I interject just for a second? My challenge is that this seems to say where we desire to do that before we even have the discussion.
I guess I don't necessarily take it, I think what this says is, is that that probably is a good discussion to have, and at some point, at the appropriate time, we may want to come back and have the discussion, and the council at some point will decide, yes, we're going to do this, or not do that. I guess that's how I take it, so I don't know if, if, how the Sustainability Commission interprets that. Same thing with right-of-way for LTD, I think what that suggests is, is that wherever LTD's bus routes and their master plan is, then if we want to implement that plan, as agreed-upon plan, then there are some things we'd want to move forward on, some of it could be trying to preserve right-of-way as we move forward on that, but the council also has a big say in, is that the plan we want to move forward with, for example? Does that help? I just, in my mind, it's not different than a lot of things that we do, the council says, here's a master plan, and within that master plan, there are dozens of items that come back to the council for action in order to implement the plan, and the council at that time says yes or no on any particular piece of that.
I guess my response would be that I-
Another round, Mike?
Oh, yes, I would, thank you, Mayor, I'm sorry, I thought I had a couple seconds.
Jennifer?
Thanks for those questions, Mike. Matt, thank you for your presentation. I just have a couple of random questions. Early on in your slides, you mentioned that you had recruited a liaison for some sort of food system, something or other?
Yeah, one of the staff people from the Solid Waste and Green Building Program-
[laughing]
Has, one of the, one of the staff people there, part of their time has been assigned to helping deal with food-related issues within the community.
I just was concerned that that might have been a new hire.
Yeah, no, no.
And then, I'm sort of having some, some of these pages refer to the internal plan, but this is titled the Eugene Community Climate and Energy Action Plan.
Right.
So, is it internal or is it external?
That's a good question. It's, no, it's intended as a community plan, so it's intended to be external. There are a couple of internally-focused actions that are there because they're looking more at the consumption piece, they're looking at, so one of our most, more recent findings in the world of carbon accounting is that the things that we're consuming have huge amounts of energy associated with them, and that wasn't something that was really in the discussion as the internal climate action plan was made. And so, there are a couple actions that got incorporated into this plan that are looking at internal consumption. Does that make sense?
Yes, and I'm much more comfortable with this being an internal plan as opposed to an external plan, but looking at it externally, are these in fact recommendations, or are they mandates? And what, and I guess I don't see, if we're really wanting the entire community to get on board, the private businesses and whatnot, I guess I don't really see any incentives or rewards, or, and I guess my biggest question was, are these just recommendations or mandates?
Yes, no, these are absolutely lined out as recommendations, so when we talk about LTD funding sources, for example, we're recognizing that LTD is having a hard time keeping service going, and if we're going to reduce greenhouse gas emissions within our community and help people be resilient to high energy costs, having a high-functioning mass transit system is really important. So, we're not saying that this is how you're going to do that, or that has to be done, we're saying, if we're serious about reducing greenhouse gas emissions, that has to be something that we pay attention to. So, they're not mandates by any stretch, and I recognize, there's a ton of these that will take, you know, additional discussion, how do we do this, how do we create incentives? You know, there's some things pointing at green building, for example, and the need for incentivizing, or helping people do weatherization, for example. How that happens exactly is going to be up to the partnership between the E-Web and our Green Building Program in Lane County, and how do we make that happen? It's just, so it's at a higher level than that, if you will, it's, it is a recommendation, it's not a mandate by any stretch.
Okay, and I have one more question. There's probably more to John. The action plan covers these six areas, which pretty much cover all the issues we ever deal with here at the council, so I'm just curious, is the expectation then that every future plan and every future decision will have to be filtered through this document?
I don't, I don't think it gets filtered through that document, I think there's a couple of pieces. One is, as we talked about before, we do want to have discussions around policies and strategies as we filter them through the triple bottom line, for example, which I think is a, is a little bit of a higher umbrella than just this plan. But we have other kinds of plans, too. There's JEO Economic Development Plan that we have talked about, and moving forward, we have metro plans, so there are a lot of different plans that come into play, so I don't see this as a filter for all of them. What we do want to do is be able to work through a triple bottom line analysis for a lot of those policies, some of which this does include, but this is not all-inclusive of that.
Thank you.
I was going to say that, I was going to mention the triple bottom line thing, but I was also going to say that when we brought forward the recommendations from the SBI, the Sustainable Business Initiative, we had things that we knew were out there for the community that they could choose to take up or not take up, and that's true with this as well. We're trying to work in partnership and build relationships that make people want to work together to move in certain directions, but we certainly can't make anybody do something that they don't want to do. I guess our job is to try to make them, to have them want to work with us on these things, so that we can accomplish them for our, not only our city, but for our broader community. Andrea?
Thank you, Mayor. So, this is, thank you very much for this work, and I really appreciate all the hours and all the work that every, all the community members have done. When the mayor brought this forward and talked about the Sustainability Commission, I just kind of scratched my head and said, okay, you know, if you want me to, I'll do it, but I, like, not really connected to understanding the philosophy of it, and that's really kind of what I see it. I mean, these are like best practices, if we want to do good things for the environment, and if we want to obtain certain goals, this is what I view this document as. And so, I'm glad that we've done this, you know, I consider myself somewhat of an environmentalist, I believe everybody who lives in Oregon is an environmentalist, because we all love the environment we live in. So, those are different words than being a sustainable person, you know, or believing in sustainability, and how do we, you know, measure things that are good for the, not only for the environment, but for ourselves and for economics. So, kind of is like enlightening me a little bit, I feel like a light's turning on, but it's still kind of dim.
We'll work on that.
Okay.
I ain't touching that.
Because it's like, I look at some of- Because it's like, I look at some of this stuff and I think, you know, kind of think, you know, like, we can't, we can't demand people do this stuff. We can't tell them that these are the best things to do, but if we want to obtain these goals, this is a way to do it. And I kind of think that on council, we share pieces of ourselves with the community, and we try and give them good ideas, and this is one of them that I think I have no problem in supporting. The thing that I guess I would talk to you, John, about is, you know, continually, we've had comments and discussions about the Human Rights Commission and their internal plan and external plan, and I try to listen and see where these, where this is going to marry, and I'm, and I'm still looking for it. And so just don't want to lose sight of that. And I think that what I would like to see, and I don't know if this would be a part of the economic development strategy or of, this would be part of it, you know, when we talk about miles traveled for food, you know, in my neighborhood, in Highway 99, there, you know, people have to go a long way to get good food. And, you know, we've been trying everything, three ways to Sunday, to try and see what we can do to revitalize that area and encourage, you know, you know, talk to people to see about how we can get that going in that neighborhood, because it really is, you know, I guess they would call it a food swamp, you know, is a term that I've used, because there's really, you know, no place to buy fresh fruit or fresh vegetables or fresh meat, you know, and so I just, I don't know if that has to do with this, but I kind of feel like it does, because you talk about having to go buy your food somewhere far away, you know, unless you use mass transit, you know, those are definitely extra miles. So thank you all for your work. I really do appreciate this.
Thanks. May I respond? Mayor, just to fill in, the 20-minute neighborhoods is about that specifically. It's, and it's going into the Envision Eugene process, thinking about specifically, how do people have access on foot or on bike or via mass transit to full-service grocery stores, schools, parks, et cetera? So that's certainly a component of it.
We'd have to be innovative about things like that. I think you've heard that before, where we might have to bring in, bring in some mobile unit in some places for creating more food access. It's just, we've got to be creative, and I think that's what the food security folks will be engaged in. But I think you're right, it comes from an economic point of view, it comes from a social equity point of view, it comes from, and wedding those things is very important in the way we look at what we do in our community. Mike, you next.
Yeah, I guess I'm going to vote in favor of the motion, and predominantly, it's because the way it reads says that we're supporting the goals, and the first three goals here, and that the specific decisions are coming back for later discussion. And I can get behind that because the idea involved here, and there's a bunch of this report that I would take issue with and have lots of conversations about, but the essence of the goals are around energy use and the cost of it and what the community should be prepared for. And I think we should be prepared, because I, you know, there are a lot, like I said, a lot of parts of this I can agree with. I don't think, I think it's crazy to imagine that we'll still be driving cars that burn gasoline 20 or 30 years from now. I think that's just crazy to imagine that that's true. The cost of it, I think, will be prohibitive, and we'll have other alternatives by then. And how we help folks transition to a different place and what we're thinking about and what we're prepared for is smart. You know, on a personal level, I plowed under my backyard about years ago and have been growing half the backyard in vegetables for years, because I think the issues around food security and what we do with that on a local basis are very, very important. So to the degree that some of these goals here support parts of this that I think are intelligent for us to do, I'm okay with supporting the goals with the caveat that there are a whole lot of them in here and some of the basis for them being there that I would tend to have issue with. So I just want to make sure we're, we're clear when I do that.
Okay.
All right, here's the motion, if we're, oh, sorry.
Betty, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Actually, I had my hand up before you.
I didn't see that.
I, the question I have is, how, I think this is good work, how is the community going to become aware of this? How will it be used except for, it's good to use it internally and thinking about actions of the city, but how about community?
Yeah, that's a good question. You'll see that in each one of the sections, there's a specific action sometimes, too, about how we encourage a community to, you know, shift practices and to do things differently, and I think that's probably the primary way is through, you know, education campaigns, wherever they exist, about the role of consumption in greenhouse gas emissions, for example.
I'm thinking about the report itself, the book.
The plan, right.
So I think, and you can chime in, but you know, we'll distribute it through websites, you know, all these 400-plus people, I think, will be good ambassadors for the plan. Sustainability Commission will be a good ambassador for the plan. You know, it could be appropriate that Babe hits the circuit and makes presentations to a variety of people. So I think those are the kinds of things that could, through the neighborhood associations is also a good vehicle.
Well, that's what I was getting to, the neighborhood associations. If it was advertised that this would be what the topic is and have, ask each neighborhood association to have, have a general meeting devoted to this perhaps, with some of those hard-working people from the Sustainability Commission going out and appearing at the meetings. Would there be copies, bound copies of this available somewhere?
We have a few limited copies. Will also be posted online, so we can make it available if somebody...
Not everybody's online, but maybe a copy at the neighborhood or association meeting so that people could...
Yeah, the library's a good repository for these kinds of things also, and the branch libraries and all that.
Okay, thank you, that's all.
And I would just add that, I don't know if all of them do, maybe, Babe, you may know this, I, but many, many of our neighborhood associations already have sustainability committees that are busy at work doing some of these things right now, and so we can feed right into, and a lot of them participated in creating this. So I think there are doors, not maybe for all, but a lot of doors already there to connect neighborhood associations with this document.
Absolutely, and if I could just add, if you remember when we were back here at the beginning of August, talking about the work plan of the Sustainability Commission, one of the primary tasks on that work plan was around outreach and messaging, and so that's something that the commission is actively talking about and looking for opportunities to network with neighborhood associations and other business and community groups to get the message out about this.
Mike?
One more.
After, after, you'll be next.
I'll put the motion on the table. I move to direct the city manager to implement actions that support the Community Climate and Energy Action Plan goals and objectives, subject to best practices, resources, collaboration with community partners, and approval by council of future policy changes.
Second. Moved and seconded, now Alan.
Babe's new to the, to the city, and since Matt kind of gave birth to this, you're going to actually get to rear the child, so to speak. I'm kind of wondering what you think about this plan, given your, you've got an interesting perspective, since you're new to the city and you come from a place that we won't name from the north.
Importantly.
Well, first of all, I think it's an incredible body of work, and I give Matt a lot of credit for his ability to shepherd this through. I, my perspective is that this plan is really on, really on the cutting edge in terms of innovation around this type of planning. It tries to achieve several objectives that are obviously related but somehow missing in other plans, the combined objectives of planning for climate change and adaptation, trying to reduce greenhouse gas impacts, but also tying that directly to fossil fuel use. I mean, that is not something that we did in that city to the north. Those were separate initiatives that didn't always come together in one place. So I think that's one of the innovations I'm really impressed with by this plan, is that it brings together those multiple but very closely related objectives, and it's great to see it all here. The other piece that I think is an important innovation that you've already heard about is this connection to health, to public health, and making that direct connection and having an analytical assessment to support it. I think that's a real important innovation as well. So I think Eugene has really put itself on the map in creating a plan like this. I think it's at the cutting edge.
Good to hear that. All right, ready to vote on that? All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition. Thank you very much, everybody, for your work and all the work that's to come. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It's really good.